We're going to get started for the more state commissioner, Mr. Dent, fill in some prayer. Father, we ask your help now. Continue, Father. The blessings, try to understand what we've been dealing with. Help us, because only you can do it, and we thank you for what you're willing to do now. In the blessed name, Lord, as we dare for this budget, let us be mindful that what we've got to do, make hard choices, and it's not perfect, but it's still that we can survive and will be victorious. These blessings and all other blessings that rest now, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Let the lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, welcome, Mr. Dent, workshop Tuesday, February 28, 2025. We have a conference line set up. Number there is 1-917-900-1022. Access code 32347. This is not a toll-free number, and you may be subject to long-distance charges according to your long-distance plan. And the chairperson of the meeting for public comment, please follow him along instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial *5. The moderator will unmute your line at your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You'll be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding any agenda item will be given three minutes for comment. A comment maker may only speak one time for each agenda item. With that, we will move on to out of three of the board to discuss the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Do you want to start, sir?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can start. So Danielle's got some stuff, and I thought we would start with Shawna. She's, she's drawn up a estimated revenue losses from the mill closure and the homes that were lost in the storm. So if we can start with her, that at least gives us an idea of kind of what we're looking at, you know, from a loss standpoint.
Thank y'all for having me tonight. We don't have a babysitter, so my husband's here to join us, and this is our idea of a date night. So, um, thank you. We're here. And, um, and yeah, so I, uh, I do, I come bearing not the greatest news. Following the closure of Foley Cellulose Paper Mill and the devastating attacks of three major hurricanes, I'm here to inform you that our county will experience a historic decline in property tax revenue for the 2025 roll. You all should now have a packet. And page two, we're going to first dive into the coastline damage, estimated revenue losses. On the left-hand side, I broke most of this up between County General Fund and MSTU, so that you can get an idea of both sides and get, get the whole picture instead of just part of it. The, let's see, the County General Fund, Helene Coastline Damage was around, assessed value in 2024 was around $414 million for a total revenue of around $3 million. And 2025 assessed value would be around $362 million, equating to a $378,000 loss in County General Fund revenue. On the MSTU side, you can see the 2024 total revenues were around $507,000. The 2025 estimated revenue is $443, $443,000 for estimated loss of $63,000. On the next page, I kind of want to give, wanted to give an idea, y'all an idea of the example of a homestead parcel. This is an actual homestead parcel in Keaton Beach and what their value and their taxes would look like next year. So I explained to y'all plenty of times before the Save Our Homes value, the Save Our Home values and what that savings and protection does for market values that steadily increase of year over year and, um, and how much that really does save an individual. And in this case, it saved them a lot. So their just value was $424,070 in 2024. Their Save Our Home value is $319,100, making their assessed value $104,970 for a taxable of $928.81. In 2025, their building is completely gone, no longer there. Their just value is now $220,470. Their Save Our Homes is $115,500 in assessed value, $104,970 in tax bill, the exact same. So that is part of that Save Our Homes protection and what that looks like for a homestead parcel. So when I show those losses, I'm not really talking about these. I'm not talking about these homestead parcels. They had that huge Save Our Homes cap and were very much protected. Also, I wanted to kind of give y'all a little information about some of the legislation that's been passed recently after Lee County had a lot of those, had, I think it was, um, what was that hurricane name? Thank you. Ian. Um, they, they got a lot of this legislation passed where at the beach, you have a homestead or any, any home that was catastrophically damaged, in our situation, we have over 250, you have five years to rebuild and can keep your homestead exemption. That's a pretty big deal in, in this scenario because even if someone did decide to wait to rebuild, they're still not, they're not, they're still going to be paying the same amount. This is a good example. They're still going to be paying the same amount. They're not, their homestead exemption is not going to be removed. That would almost be like penalizing someone for losing a home. You know, that's just not what the legislature wanted to do. So, but what that also means is that we're not going to be seeing any new revenue or any new constructions on that parcel for that time. Even further than that, if someone does decide to rebuild and it is their homestead exemption, if they build at 110% of the square footage of the prior building, they get to keep that cap. And their assessed value gets to stay at that amount. And we've had quite a few of those calls. You know, we've been getting hundreds of these, the catastrophic refund, people that have come in and applied for that refund. And while they're there, we ask the questions. We say, okay, are you going to rebuild? And if you are, let me give you some of the situation, how this is going to work. Because a lot of them say, well, I'm not going to rebuild a home. Usually it's $300 a square foot when it's on stilts. I'm just not going to rebuild this if my taxes are going to go from $1,000 to $10,000. And I say, well, you're protected if you stay within those parameters of the square footage. So just know that your constituents are protected under those property tax laws for catastrophic loss. But that also means that for those kind of set of properties that are rebuilding, it's not going to really look like any new construction and new revenue in the future. So, um, so the rebuilding, and so for the 110%, so yes, for five years, only if you rebuild, it's three years if you're not being rebuilt. So say, so for us, my mother-in-law, so she lost everything, she'll probably move to town. She has three years to move to a new homestead and be able to port that amount, port that, Save Our Homes amount. You can actually take that amount with you to your new home, but you only have three years. You have to do it within that three-year range, so, yeah. So if you're not rebuilding, it's three years. If you're rebuilding, it's five years. Any questions on that? I know that was a lot at once. And it's all on my website. Anybody that has any questions, it's on the main page of my website, all of that rebuilding information, the statutes that go along with them. So here is an example of the non-homestead parcels, and this is where I got that information regarding the revenue loss. So this is an actual building, the Sierra Island Non-Homestead Parcel Example. You can see the pictures there at the bottom. This property had a multiple buildings. They are all gone. And their taxable value in 2024 was $471,940 for abalone taxes of $6,773.85. And their estimated taxable value for 2025 will be $164,900 with a taxable of around $2,300. So that is, that is just one example. You can see there that there's one, two, three, four, five, five, six, six other homes in that picture that are no longer there as well. So that's just one small example of a non-homestead parcel and that future revenue loss, just based off of that. So now for the bigger news that we were not expecting to be so great this year, the 2025 Foley Cellulose estimated revenue losses. For the County General Fund, Foley Cellulose assessed value in 2024 was $375 million for a total revenue of $2,715,975. Sorry, $2,715,975. Uh, assessed value for 2025, and this is a pretty accurate number, as far as I can tell. Early, this is obviously January. I will not get their tangible personal property return until April, but just from opening conversations, this is what it will look like. And that will make our 2025 estimated revenue from Foley Cellulose tangible personal property account $217,000, $278. So, uh, total loss of revenue for the County General Fund, $2,498,000. MSTU, that looks like, uh, assessed value for 2024 was $375 million, like we said, around $460,000 last year for total revenue, and will go down to $36,000 this year for a total MSTU loss of $422,000. So the totals from those two, County General Fund, Helene Damage is 378 and Foley Cellulose at 2.49 would look like an estimated total revenue loss of $2,876,876. That's the percent loss from the prior years, 20%. And looking over to the MSTU, Helene Damage total $63,000, Foley Cellulose totals $422,000 for a total loss of $486,589. So of, of all the people that have came and sat down before us, like I said, we did ask these questions, and I would say maybe around 20% right now, people that have come and sat down said that they intend to rebuild. Only 20%. Mark, would you kind of think about estimates correct? I mean, I, I, I think it was a little less before the insurance companies started really coming, coming around. You know, we really actually thought that, um, most of us didn't have insurance, but because it got so high the prior years, we all let it go. But, um, but of the insurance companies that people did have, they've actually started paying out, and so we've actually been thankful for that. But, but between that, just the building and zoning departments, just the, the back-and-forth confusion, I think that's really kind of hindered rebuilding. But, uh, but, but yeah, it's, um, I will say, just like when I stood here in 2021, that my office is only a part of the equation. And as you well know, y'all have the other part of the equation by the millage rates that you set. Without sustainable revenues, there will be an obvious deficit that will only be met by unfortunate rates in the millage rates. So I urge you to pursue options that generate sustainable revenue with a high priority in new construction. That, that shows across the board in multiple counties in multiple ways, that is where their sustainable revenue is coming from. And, um, of course, that's very difficult for you all because there's one landowner here in Taylor County that owns 56% of the county and is not very willing to fudge on, on moving that land. So I, I understand the task in front of you, I very much do. But I implore you to prioritize facilitating a consistent and legally accurate building and zoning department so that our coastal community can rebuild and that we can start generating some of that sustainable revenue so that we don't have each year these, these sort of percent losses. So, so yeah, that's, that's, that's my news of the night. And if there's any questions that you have, I will be more than glad to dive into them. But I really was hoping as, as much as I could to try to hold off on that Foley Cellulose another year, but they presented evidence that they brought to that amount, is all I can say.
Any questions?
So it's really over $3 million when you add up the General Fund and the MSTU, it's like over $3 million per million.
Yes, it's 3.3. 3.3, 3.3.
Any one have any question? So Danielle's got, um, some information she's going to, she's going to get out to you and go over. So what we, what we attempted to do, and she can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I'm going to try to.
I think I have you on the move.
What we attempted to do here with this next spreadsheet is, you know, because we have a $100 million budget, but as y'all know, most of that's not funded by the abalone taxes. So what we attempted to do here with this spreadsheet is to give you, is to pull out everything that's affected by the abalone taxes so that you guys can get a look at the areas we're really talking about that are going to be, that are going to be impacted in effect. So, um, and I'll let Danielle go over, and then we can, we can answer any questions.
Um, yeah. So, I need to put this in my, sorry. So the front page is the General Fund. Um, like Gary said, everything, I've taken out anything that, I've taken out all the grants, anything that has allocated revenue that has a specific department that goes with it that we have to budget no matter what because we get the revenue to cover that. Um, and then on the other side are the departments that are affected by that revenue. So when you take all the current revenue for the budget that way with the departments, there's only a difference of $565,000 in the General Fund, and we're looking at 2.8 million that we have to come up with. So, um, and then.
And I'd like to interrupt you for sake. So not included in this is reserves or any capital outlays, and that's funded by the ones that sales taxes, and none of that's included in this. This is just, um, the abalone taxes and these other miscellaneous revenues that we bring in, and the departments that they, that they go to fund.
And I don't want it to look confusing, but like, um, solid waste recycle, for instance, Department O260, you have two separate numbers there. The first number, the 229, that's what's actually budgeted, but then we get recycle revenues that we budget for the year as well as a small county's grant. So I took that amount from that. And so the 133901 is what we actually fund with what's left with the revenue on the side. You see what I'm saying? So we have a few like that. We have mosquito control local. The city pays for a portion of the mosquito control. Um, library fees, we get some library fees and concessions, we get some concessions. So, um, we still have to fund the balance of that, of what we don't receive in revenue. So this is, that's just the General Fund. And then the second page is the MSTU. I took out the building department. I put that on the bottom because when we receive all of our building permit fees of what is budgeted, it does fund the current building department expenditures that's budgeted. But you will see that what we receive in year-to-date, so what we receive through December of 2024 is $32,873. Based on the budget, we should have received $57,562. So we are running at a loss of almost $25,000 through December 31st in revenue. But then the other part of the MSTU, we're only, it's only like $2,300 extra in revenue, and we're looking at $486,000 that we have to come up with. That'll be short. And like Gary said, this does not include capital or any, or reserves.
I see we haven't mentioned West Frazier, Dave, what's the matter?
They're the city. Um, but, and, and they have been consistent with their tangible personal property account. It has not, it has not decreased that much. In other words, their equipment's still on site as far as 2024. They, they obviously haven't returned April of 2025. So like if you look at the, to kind of put a little bit of it in perspective, if you look at, as everybody's looking at the second page still, and the abalone taxes that for 2025 is $2,900,000, with the loss that Shawna reported, that's going to go down to 1.5. And actually a little less than that because we only budget 95%, but it's, I mean, 1.5. And then for the General Fund, on the front page, the abalone taxes that's budgeted for this year is 14.2, and that's going to go down to 11.3.
I'll make a, you know, a couple more comments. So we, you know, this county has, this board and previous boards have been very conservative with their budgeting, and we have prepared for this day. You know, we've, we've done about the good jobs we could to be ready by having, um, you know, some excess, you know, we, you know, we have healthy reserves and so, and we don't have any debt. So, you know, sure, we can't, you know, we can't operate year after year off the reserves that we have. We've got to make some changes, and we've got to do some things. But, you know, we do have reserves that, you know, we can lean on to help us get through a couple of years until we can figure out how to get some more revenue. So, um, you know, we don't want to, reason we're bringing this up earlier is because we don't, we don't want to just balance with our reserve because that's not going to last very long. But, you know, so we want to go ahead and start be thinking about, you know, some of the stuff that Shawna mentioned, or, or, you know, if we want to start looking at, you know, other things we can do to generate revenue is assessment, you know, special assessments, if there's areas that we can do that. Of course, you can increase, um, you know, millage rates, and, and we can also cut expenses. So, and I know that's not, we don't want to really reduce services, you know, because sometimes you got to do what you got to do. But, um, you know, I think we could probably get away without, hopefully we get away without reducing services at least for a year, maybe, if we lean on some of our other reserves that we've saved up until we can come up with a way to, to generate some more revenue. So, uh, just, just if you, this is just a scenario. I just wanted to give you an idea to think about this. I know you guys probably aren't going to entertain this, but maybe you would entertain some, one of the millage increase. But right now, we're at 8.467, 4676 mills. If we, if we put everything in together, the General Fund, MSTU, that's 16,600. If we went to a 10-mill cap, it's 19,600. So that generates $3 million of abalone taxes. So that's the difference there between what we're doing now and the 10-mill cap. So, um, just to give you an idea of, of what, what that looks like, because you can't go over 10 mills. So, and, and also, you know, there's some areas, you know, she put the building permit on the back, on that back sheet there at the bottom. We didn't talk about that. Put the building department. No, you know, this has been a problem this year, and you just, we talked about it in the meeting before this, but just like the building permit fees did not fund, in the current budget, did not fund the expenses of the building department that were short. And now this year, with all, with the waivers because of the storms, were way short. And so, but, but, you know, if we could get those fees in lines with where they need to be, then, you know, that's an area where we could increase the fees and fund that department completely without having to use abalone taxes to fund that. So, you know, those are just, that's just a small area, but there's things I have that we can, that we can do, because I don't think the building permit fees have been increased since 2008, I think, something like that.
Mr. Chairperson, and if I could speak to that, 2008, I think it's the last time that they were increased, but really that department should be an enterprise fund. I don't, I don't know that you want the, the taxpayers to pay, um, in general for, for building permit, for that department. And to Shawna's point, something that you may want to consider, and I, probably doesn't seem like the time to discuss, you know, increasing staff, but in order to have a robust department, for example, planning, that's something that is spread equally among several people. And, um, as we have people that move into the area, they may buy, buy properties that are not eligible for a building permit. That has been a big problem for what, Shawna, the last year at least? And it takes effort from multiple people to try to determine, you know, how to resolve those issues. If there is a resolution, we have to lean on Shawna's staff. You know, if you wish to perhaps take into consideration, we may actually need to hire a part-time planner to help with that, um, when we get to that point and have the permit fees support that. It's just a consideration. It, and I, I don't know how else to make that department more robust to, um, to support new construction with, with the, the staff that we have currently, you know. So just, just some. You know, so just, just something you consider. I'm not asking for that, but I do think that we need to consider that department being self-sufficient.
Yes, I mean, I think currently it's the, the revenue's down forty-five thousand, almost forty-six thousand dollars this year. So, you know, we're going to have, we're going to end up having to go into return this year, you know, to fund that balance. So one of the other, one of the other things that you might want to consider, and I'm just throwing some things out there. I mean, this, you know, this is the board's decision on how you want to do these things. But, you know, you may want to consider changing the ordinance or the oneset sales tax to see, to see if you can start, you can use some of it for operations. Because right now you're just using it for capital and EMS. So that, that's another area we might want to look at and see if, that's where you might want to change that to be able to use that for operations instead of just using it for capital until we get, you know, back on our feet, so to speak. So those are just some, you know, I'm sure you guys have got a bunch of ideas too, but those are just some, some things that's been tossed around.
And, and don't forget, you know, there's, there's always special, I mean, I'm not, we're just throwing things out. So there is the ability for special assessments, but if that's something that you wish to consider, we, you would have to start. I think even if you started now, it would be an entire year before that could be adopted just because of the schedule, the statutory schedule. And we would have to ask Conrad about that, but you may not even, I believe that would take a study to be, to determine what amount they may, that may be if you wanted a fire assessment or an EMS assessment. I know that some counties have a permit fee for RVs, but I haven't, I haven't been able to determine how that's, you know, what the process is to even implement something like that. But I know that's been floated by different people as well, just considerations.
What was the study cost?
I believe probably between, well, it depends. I, I want to say between thirty and forty thousand dollars is what we expended for the solid waste study. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, that's definitely what we spent somewhere around there, yeah.
Right.
Would we need to advertise that or could we use existing firm?
Well, I believe what we did with solid waste is, I believe we piggybacked off an joint, as if, another county. We piggybacked off Dixie County because they were going through the same process.
Is that an option in this situation?
Possibly. We had a fire assessment study completed, what, five years ago, maybe? So it's been longer than that. It, I don't know if that could be updated for a lesser cost. Or I would, I mean, I haven't really explored that. I know that there's been discussion of impact fees, but that's, and then we, we actually looked at that just to do some research. And that is a one-time fee to fund capital. So that would not help us with operational costs every year. And Gary, what, what was the amount of our one-cent sales tax? What's it budgeted? Is it two point?
Especially as the revenue at 2.5.
2.5 and we have over $2 million in reserve.
We have 1.7 in reserve.
1.7 in reserve for one-cent sales tax. So if you wanted to consider using the one-cent sales tax, either the reserves or the, the revenue for operations, that would be, you know, that would just be an option.
I'd take an order to change to do so.
It's a resolution. I said ordinance earlier, but it's a resolution, I think, that changes the ordinance round, I believe.
Probably.
I think that's what we did the last time.
I think so, when we started using for EMS.
But wasn't that a hard of a process, just a couple of public hearings, I think.
Commissioner, you're referring to the EMS assessment and the fire assessment study?
Well, I mean, I, I wouldn't limit it to just that, but certainly, I mean, when we're looking at these kind of shortfalls, we'll find ways to fund these areas. So that will be a consideration. But as far as the number of RVs or things that have magnitude, I think I was mentioning in that study, to determine what those fees would be.
I, I wouldn't, well, I, I, I wouldn't know how else to forecast what the, any type of fee should be without having some professional interaction. I mean, I don't know what the cost to provide services is or how to spread that out fairly and evenly with our citizens.
Yeah. I don't think any of the options presented are, are to my satisfaction. I think it would be irresponsible to start using up reserves, increasing the millage rates and adding special assessments until we have cut spending and we've cut somewhere. I, I can't imagine that any successful business would look at options such as this without first saying, where can we cut? And I know in any organization, there's room to cut. And if you're talking about the one-cent sales case, that right there cuts the sheriff's budget big time. But, you know, for me, I will never vote for any of this stuff until we have gone through and we have made cuts and we have cut some of the fluff. And there is fluff in every organization. To spend our reserves, oh my God, we don't know what else is going to happen. So that's my suggestion is y'all come up with what we can cut.
That, that was, I was just talking, I think that was one of the options that was presented by the clerk was to, unless I'm mistaken. I mean, that's the obvious, but if you want to consider, it may take multiple, a multifaceted approach to make up this kind of shortfall.
Let's start with cutting spending first and then see where we are. Because, you know, have everybody cut their budget by 20%. Ours has been cut by 20%. So everybody cut their budget by 20%. Let's see where we hit out there.
And if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe the one-cent sales tax is, is included in the sheriff's budget. Is that correct? That's, that's separate. Right. So the total of the sheriff's budget does not include the one-cent sales tax?
I understand that.
Okay.
Still, that's going to cut into his department, if I put it that way then. And that may be what we have to do. I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying that I'm not for raising the taxes. Our people are struggling enough. And then you want to talk about giving special assessments and increasing the tax, increasing fees? No, no, people are struggling. We can't do that. It's our responsibility to make cuts when it's necessary, then see where we are. And it's, and I'm, I'm not saying it's, that it's not going to be painful. It will be painful to cut budgets, but I feel like that's where we need to start. That's what we do at home. We don't go away to our savings account. We start cutting. And some things we cut out, we don't want to cut out. But that's the way life is. That's the way we need to operate this county.
Yeah, I, you know, I feel like that, that, you know, there's, there's not one thing you can do, I don't think. I think it's going to take a lot of different things to attack it. So, you know, I mean, whatever those things are, but we've talked about some different options to attack it. So that's, it's going to take a little bit of everything, probably.
Well, let me ask you this then. If, if everybody cut their budget by 20% or you take the difference between 20 and 24%, 22%, would that not work?
Well, not without cutting services and a lot of people losing jobs.
Yeah. Well, there's some things that, that I, I feel sure we could cut back home.
Yeah, there may be some things that's certainly able to, you guys and your, and your departments and wherever you, you ask to be cut, the cuts to be made, but that's a lot.
Yeah, people are not going to be happy, but, you know, I'm not happy where we are either with, with the numbers that's been presented to us. And I think by now, most people understand there's got to be changes. We can continue to keep on the way we've been, been operating for all these years and, and especially to, to use reserves and, and increase rates. I, I can't do that. We have a lot of stuff, I think, that, things that we would like to have, things that we don't necessarily have to have because we've been able to do that for all these years. Times are different now. Times are drastically different now.
Yeah, yeah, so that was it. You know, we just wanted to kind of get, get things rolling and get conversations going and getting wheels turning and thinking about, you know, where we're headed and what we're going to do. And I don't know if you guys want to, you know, if you want to kind of talk about it again, something, you kind of scheduled something and kind of do a little bit more after it all kind of sticks in or, you know, you know, if you want to wait till, whenever you want to wait to. But that's up to you guys. But I just, we just wanted to get that information out there and get the ball rolling. So, you know, because we didn't, if we start at our normal budget time, you know, it's going to be a lot of work and, you know, it's going to be difficult. So if there's anything we can start working on ahead of time, we, you know.
I would suggest that we, that we start out by asking people to cut their budgets. And then let's see what that looks like. What does that entail? What does that mean? Let's just at least look at it. It doesn't mean we have to stick to that, but let's, we've got to start somewhere. And we sure can't sit here and say, well, let's, let's go ahead and decide we're going to raise the millage rate. No, let's look at cut, cutting first and see what that sounds like. Take a look at it.
I would disagree there. I think, my guess, maybe 10% in each budget, 20% and see what it looks like.
Look at 20% to begin with. Let's just see what that would, and we may have to back off of that, but let's just see what that looks like. I mean, budgets, if you look back over the years that I've been here and you look at how the budgets have increased every year, most everybody have increased, not, not everyone. There's, there's, there's one that hasn't. But most people increase their budget pretty good every year. We've gone along with it. Now here we are. And a lot of it was things that needed to be done and I know a lot of it was nice to have. It's nice to have a lot of people in your office working for you or it's nice to have this, new, this and that and the other. But we need to at least look at it. You know, when I think about it, and I've been thinking about this a lot, you know, I don't want to cut services, but we may have to. We may not be able to graze your road every three weeks. Or we may not be able to keep the road laws open seven days a week or three days a week. I get, I get garbage service two times a week. We live with that. So I'm not saying that's what we do. I'm just saying that's some of the things we need to consider and look at. That, that's nice to have that service seven days a week, but we may not be able to afford to have that service seven days a week.
Anyone else tell me anything?
I'm not for cutting services right off the bat. We do some research on what, what we can do. You know, I'm not into cutting services right now. I mean, or I'm concerned. They're pretty spaced out now with what all we get done. I mean, some people want to have to dump open seven days a week. They could probably get by with four. You know, they could just get bigger bags and pile it out there and then you. But I remember when the dumpsters were sitting side of County Road in Canton. And services back then, they'd be piled all outside the dumpsters, on the ground because it wasn't being picked up. You know, but we'd have a lot more stuff thrown out in the woods if we didn't have to dump open seven days a week. Like I tell you, tires and lumber. I remember when it was thrown out all down on 98 on every side road going into this club down there was tires and lumber and tin, old 55-gallon drums, everything thrown out down there. So they couldn't care that they dumped, you know, so. I'm not into cutting services right off the bat.
You've got to cut something.
Ma'am?
I said you've got to cut something. And I sure don't want to cut staff if we don't have to. I'd rather, I'd rather cut back on some of these other things before we start looking at, at, you know, staff or anything like drastic like that. But, you know, you got to, you got to start thinking, what can we do without? We can't keep on the way we've been going, that's for sure.
I mean, you, all, all the constitutional officers, they could, you know, get a plan together of what they could do without and present that. You know, could y'all do without stuff? Could y'all?
Yeah, that's true.
All places y'all could cut, come on. Shauna, is there some places that could be cut?
Yes, I've already decided I would let one of my positions go. He's, he's retiring, so I'm just not going to fulfill it though.
I have one I have not filled and if you want 20%, that'll be one and a half people that would have to go. And I have one that's retired that I don't plan on replacing anyway. So all services would come to the courthouse from my office. It's the only way to do it. I do think that, and I'm sorry, I'll stand up. Sorry, I'm in, working out gear. I do think that we need, we do need to look at all the options that Gary has presented, Shauna and, and Lawanda. If everybody pays a little bit, it helps. And maybe, maybe Shauna and I need to look at who's paying and who's not. You know what I'm saying? Twenty years ago, I think it was, you had 51% of Americans paying taxes and 49 not. I think it's flipped and I think that's the, one of the issues we're having. It was said, but we need to really focus on it. Shauna said it, we've got to figure out how to get industry in here, whatever it takes. I've talked to Duke, they're supposed to have their best people on there. I hope they're on the phone listening. I said it after Pauline in a meeting, well, you know, these things take time. But you said you had your best five on it. Florida Commerce has their best 10 on it. We got nothing. And I understand you had to keep things quiet and stuff. But we, we really, and I'm, I'm, the TCDA, I'm not sure what they're doing, but I know they're working hard to get things done. I mean, I, I passed Buck E on a airplane, so I know he's out doing things. But I think that if everybody paid something in taxes, we would be better off. My dad always maintained that the 25,000 exemption should come in after you've paid on your first 25. If everybody's paying something, it does help. And I think it helps with community morale. I think it helps with, maybe they don't deface that sign at the beach because they know they're paying for it. There's just, you know, there's certain things, and I, and I see the people and I, and there are people who are struggling, just like you said. I've got one on my desk right now, I'm trying to figure out. Shauna and I've talked about it and we're going to bring it forward to legislature to do something about it. Just like she talked about keeping your homestead. Somebody gets a ship house built for them. Now they got a $2,000 tax bill that they never had before. They're on a fixed income. Their value should stay the same, in my opinion, so that they can afford to live there. But personnel's our largest, all of us. Personnel's our largest. So cutting anything is going to affect people. And people are already hurting, like you said, Commissioner Beal, they're already hurting bad. And we'll, we'll have to let people go.
When you cut personnel, you're going to end up cutting service.
Absolutely.
That's where, that's the bottom line.
Absolutely. And then I wanted to grab it before I left and, and I actually didn't, but I wanted a transaction report just for today in the driver's license office. At any time, I can look on that camera, after 1:00 to 5:00. We were breaking the fire code for the amount of people that should be in that building. And now you don't have to tell the fire chief that, but, but we, but we are.
Apparently I do.
Well, my employees have offered to leave, so they can make it up. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people, I mean, and we do a lot, and, and my budget's different. I mean, I get 413,000 from you, the rest of my 130,000. The rest of my $1.4 million budget is generated through revenue from the tax roll and services that I do. And I turn around and give you $96,000 to $50,000 each year of expenses. So, I mean, mine's a little different, but it's still going to require that people have to be.
A percentage of people in Taylor County do not pay any abhorrent taxes.
That's what I was saying earlier, that Sean and I probably need to look at that and see if we can come up with a number.
But then, what the homestead exemption is, is not determined by us.
Oh, absolutely not. No, 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 that'd be, that'd be a legislative thing if they were to move it, but I would just say, and that was something.
Right, but for the next year, you know, we've got to figure out something until, and, you know, I don't know. You don't know what the legislature's going to do.
Oh, heavens no. I do know that they have given us a lot of money with its debris cleanup, and I'm afraid that they're going to say, hey, we're winning you off.
Yeah, and they may do that, but you know, I wish everybody could pay. But what happens, you raise abhorrent taxes, and the people that, that pay taxes are going to foot the bill for the ones that pay nothing. And there's many people in this county that don't pay a dime, but they get the same services.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's what, that's exactly what I'm saying. And, and so, I mean, we need to look at things. I mean, RVs were mentioned.
That's not punish the people that are paying to, you know, I just can't do that, Mark. I can't, I can't make the people pay more.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying.
Everybody else, I can't do that.
That's not what I said.
Isn't that what an assessment would do, is to spread that cost so everybody's paying?
Everybody's paying.
Well, something, and not to add something on to the people who are already paying, because.
That's what, yes, that's what I said. It would lessen the load. If everybody's paying something, it lessens the load for those who are now paying for everything. I mean, if you had 2,000 RVs and you assessed them $1,500 for pole borne and RV, my math comes out with 3 million. Just saying. I mean, and I'll be the worst guy in the room for saying that, because I know we have a lot of that down there. But I do know that I've talked to people who are not rebuilding, that are willing to pay the same tax that they're paying on that property with a pole borne and an RV.
Me, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so there's, there's options out there, and Gary said it, it's not a mileage rate. I mean, there's, I think we just need to come at it at different angles. And, I mean, we just got to, we just got to figure out where we want to be in the future, I guess.
Yeah, and there's not going to be a one fix for.
No, absolutely not.
I understand that, I do, but you know, you have to admit that we've become very spoiled in Taylor County, you know, very spoiled. You could go, if you live out of the city, you could go any day and dump your trash somewhere. For in the city, we get it two times a week, two times a week. And that's, and we don't take stuff out and dump it in the woods because we only get service two times a week.
You don't, a lot of people would.
Some people will, and they'll always do that. If you've got, if you don't ever close the roll-offs, they're, they're still going to do that because that's the caliber of person that they are. But, I mean, you know, we're very spoiled, very spoiled in a lot of ways.
Why are y'all talking about dumping stuff in the woods? They're way out there, there's a lot on the gate, there's a gate crossing. Where you dumping in the woods at right now?
I don't know.
Well, I think we need to be open minded.
I have something else, actually. I meant to mention this earlier. I kind of did some research too, because sometimes you don't have to reinvent the wheel. So Hurricane Michael hit, and of course, we are nothing like Bay County. They have sales tax revenue, they have tourism tax revenue, lots of different things that continue to come into their county, even after Michael. But one thing that they did mention was that they investigated other ways to further offset the property tax losses. They participated with SunTrust Bank in a federal program called the New Market Tax Credit, operated by the U.S. Treasury Department. The program encourages lenders to invest in economically distressed communities. So, and that's been a couple of people have reached out and said, you know, what about, what about us going to banks and maybe talking about lower interest rates for new construction in the, in the damaged zones? So that's just something I'm throwing out there, but, but yeah, I mean, we're not the only ones. In Panama City, the actual city themselves, they had over 85% of their homes were damaged. Their buildings were completely damaged. And that's, that actually went on to the next tax roll. And they ended up having to up their mileage rates, but eventually they got to come back down because the new construction hit and finally hit the tax rolls. Mexico Beach is a perfect example of that, but, but that was just a couple of ideas, just kind of tagging on to Mark there, just of things that y'all can think of in the future.
Well, you know, if you think about it, Panama City versus King Beach.
Exactly.
Big difference there.
That's exactly what I said. Exactly right.
You said Joe was about the same.
Yes.
Better Beach is beautiful.
And then bunch camper trailers ship back up over there.
Say again?
They don't lay camper trailers over there at all.
Exactly.
They don't, they don't have a pole borne on the forefront over there neither.
Well, we do.
We do, but, but they don't over there. My daughter worked in a fence company, she wanted to get a camper trailer, move float her job. She could not find a place to even put a camper trailer over there in the fence company without getting way out of town there in a trailer park.
Yeah, that's the difference in those bigger communities and our small rural communities too. Big difference in many ways.
So, I mean, do you guys want to plan another meeting in next month or in March or kind of discuss some more things or?
Probably didn't digest what we've got here, but I don't think we need to wait until, like you said, the last hour, because when we get to the last hour, the hour that we do things is going to increase everything just to make it up, so.
I'll send out budget instructions May the 1st. Budgets are due to me June the 1st. So if we could do something for, kind of at least have an idea before budget instructions go out.
Yeah, so I mean, March sounds like a good timeframe to kind of revisit it. If you guys are, yeah.
Like the first part of March, maybe?
Yeah, just another meeting, another budget discussion meeting, just to kind of, after it's all kind of sunk in and maybe everybody's had a chance to think of some, some things. Kind of some other things, I just, I just, you know, I mean, to me, it just feels like it's going to take a lot. It's going to, I mean, it's going to take more than just, just cuts. I mean, cuts can happen, but it's not, I don't think you can be able to cut enough. So, yeah, we're going to have to look at some other ways.
We have a regular meeting on the 3rd of March, the, until the 18th.
Well, there's a workshop in February.
Yeah, I know we just mentioned March, but I mean, we.
I mean, the end of February would be a month from now.
That's right, we're out that week.
We're talking about the next meeting and maybe the next meeting to be on this, whether the end of February after the next, at the workshop or the first part of March.
Why don't we just have special meetings? Let's don't wait until the end of February, then what's wrong with us coming back and having more meetings, saying, took a couple of weeks and ask everybody to cut their budgets, whatever amount y'all want to ask them, see what that looks like, and then start looking, start the process.
I think that's where we tie this meeting into another meeting, so I would presume that's probably what we would do with the next one, is tie it into one of the meetings.
One.
I guess that's kind of what the feel of the board was, that's the time. That's, that's what the feel of the board was when everybody wanted to meet was tonight after the regular meeting. I'm just going along with what we already did, and if it's at the workshop in February, then it's something.
It's important that after many, that I don't mind to come back.
Danielle and I are going to be out that week. We have a meeting out of town, so we won't be here for February's workshop, so we'd have to do it a different. We can do it in a special time, you know, or after a meeting, it doesn't matter.
Or maybe March 3rd, maybe.
Well, at the end of the second meeting in February.
You want that time?
Sure. What's that, what day is that, second meeting? February, uh, the 18th.
You know, just to give us enough of time to have a meeting a month. And with everything that we've got to accomplish, you think that we're going to be able to do it the way we're going now at this rate?
Talking about meeting in February 18th.
And then what about after that?
I guess we'll see. Decide by year. Decide what we get done in that. Decide by year. Decide what we get done in that meeting and then.
Okay.
So, February 18th? After, have another budget workshop after the regular meeting.
Yeah.
So, anything else?
And what do we need to bring back at that meeting?
Our, they go to you.
My proposal is that we ask everyone to cut their budget, let's look at that and see what it looks like. Because, you know, just like some of y'all have said, it's going to take more than one thing. It's going to take budget cuts, it's going to probably take, they take some of this other stuff, one, it's going to be one fix.
Maybe even, if we reach out to some of the surrounding counties and some of these RV, I think we talked about RV assessments, and see what, I know a couple, two or three years back, we talked about, some of the folks talked about, they had places in different counties that had an RV assessment, just see what that looks like.
We pay in Gilfris County every year.